Mr. Ludiki, do we have any early speakers?
We have none that have indicated that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any person that would like to address the Planning Commission on any agenda item is requested to complete a speaker card for the Recording Secretary and identify the agenda item that you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Planning Commission at the time such item is discussed by the Planning Commission. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. In an uncontested hearing, the oral staff report will not be presented if no one in the audience wishes to speak in opposition to the item to be heard; two, the applicant has reviewed the staff report and agrees to abide by the conditions recommended in the report; and three, members of the commission wish to waive their staff report. The Chair then will entertain a motion to act on the item. So, last time in our meeting, we were discussing residential zoning updates, and we spent a couple of hours up here, and we kept people waiting and waiting and waiting on stuff. So, with that in mind, I'd like to change, if we have a consistent consensus from the Planning Commission, I'd like to change the order of business for tonight's meeting. So first, we will hear agenda items in the following order. First will be approval of the minutes. Second will be conditional use permit number 1213. Third will be conditional use permit 12-6. Fourth will be conditional use permit 608. Fifth will be conditional use permit 1108. And the last one will be the residential zone update. The first item on the agenda is the consent calendar for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 16, 2012. Do I have a motion and a second on this item?
I move the motion, the minutes from regular meeting of July 16, 2012.
Is that as corrected?
Yes.
I second it. If there's any discussion, please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item number six is conditional use permit 12-13. The public hearing is now open on the matter. Let the record reflect that we have received an uncontested letter from the applicant agreeing to all conditions. Mr. Ludiki, do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers on that item, Mr. Vice Chairman.
If the Planning Commission so wishes, we will wait, rate, wait the reading of the staff report or hear a brief report. Okay, if there's no comments, we will, if we will now close the public hearing on this matter and open up for commission discussion and/or entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number 12-17 approving conditional use permit number 12-13.
I second.
If there's no more discussion, please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Number four, conditional use permit is 12-06. This is a continued item for construction and operation of a church facility. The public hearing is now open on this matter. Let the record reflect that we have received an uncontested letter from the applicant agreeing to all conditions. Mr. Ludiki, do we have any speakers?
I have no speakers on this item, Mr. Chairman.
If the Planning Commission so wishes, we will wa, waive the reading of the staff report or hear a brief report. A brief report? Yes, we'd like to hear a brief report. It's such an exciting project.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Hall and Commissioners. Conditional use permit number 12-06 is the construction and operation of a church facility totaling 32,524 square feet, including a 9,527-square-foot auditorium, an 8,230-square-foot multipurpose room, and 14,000 square feet of miscellaneous office space, including a one-acre drainage basin. This is located on 20 acres of 80 gross acres located on the southwest corner of 30th Street East and Avenue K8. The applicant is AB Christian Center. This case was initially brought before you back in June 18, 2012. The applicant had requested that this be continued to the hearing today. The conditional use permit is required for a church to be located in a residential zone to ensure compatibility with existing single-family residences. Access to the project will be provided from a 20-foot driveway on 30th Street East and a 36-foot wide driveway on Avenue K8. The applicant has provided 341 parking spaces on the project site. This is greater than the 212 that's required by the code. If we can go to the slide detailing the elevations. The proposed design for the church is characterized as a Spanish or Mediterranean-style architecture consisting of tower elements and arches as shown. Staff is recommending approval for AB Christian Center based on the site having sufficient parking, adequate access, and with the hours of operations on Sundays from 7:30 until 1:30 p.m., and also on weekdays, Monday through Thursday, from 8:30 until 4:30 p.m. for occasional events which would be compatible with the existing uses. This concludes the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
The only question I had was an agenda review was is that one-acre drainage basin, the dirt would not be stacked on the site. Is the applicant present? Would you like to, to speak on your project?
Hello, my name is Randy Gorman, and I'm with Antelope Valley Engineering.
Welcome, Randy.
Representing Antelope Valley Christian Center. The purpose of the drainage basin is for the temporary mitigation of the onsite water that's being generated by the project. The, as you know, to the, further to the west is an existing channel that's one, at some point, will be graded through, but at this time, there's no way to get to that channel. So we're proposing a basin a little ways away from the site to allow for possible future expansion. The dirt that would come out of that would probably be used to put back onto the site for building the pad, parking lot, and whatever else is needed. At this time, that's, that's what we would propose.
It's an exciting project. I asked also an agenda review if we were going to have solar shade in the future.
That, I'm not sure.
Seems like that parking lot would be ideal for it. Any other questions? Thank you. It is appropriate then to close the public hearing without objection and open up the commission discussion and/or entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number 12-15 approving conditional use permit number 12-06.
I second that.
It is moved and seconded. Let's vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
New public hearing, number, agenda item number five, conditional use permit 0608. This is a request of a one-year extension. The public hearing is now open on the matter. Let the record reflect that we have received an uncontested letter from the applicant agreeing to all conditions. Mr. Ludiki, do we have any speakers on this agenda item?
I have no speakers on this item, Mr. Vice Chairman.
If the Planning Commission so wishes, we will waive the reading of the staff report or hear a brief report. This is second. Nobody. We will now close the public hearing on this matter and open up commission discussion and/or entertain a motion. The last time that we did this, there was a parcel map that would prevent this process from having to happen again. Has there been any contact with them on that?
Staff has not had a specific discussion with the applicant on that. Mr. Vice Chairman, that's really their choice of how they want to proceed.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Okay, then it is then appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and open up for the commission discussion and/or entertain a motion. I'll make a motion that we grant a one-year extension to September 11, 2013, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the revised condition list, attachment to the resolution number 09-23.
Second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Let's vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Agenda item number three is conditional use permit 11-07. This is a continued public hearing for construction of a 10-megawatt photovoltaic solar electric generating facility in a rural residential 2.5 zone. The public hearing is now open on this matter. Let the record reflect that we have received an uncontested letter from the applicant agreeing to all conditions. Mr. Ludiki, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do.
And would you like to call them up or? Or we'd have to do a staff report first?
Yes, my suggestion would be that we hear a, a staff report on it.
Should we also listen to the presentation from Silverado?
If that's the commission's desire, you can certainly do that also.
Okay, so let's hear a staff report on it.
Chairman and Commissioners, the applicant Silverado Power LLC is requesting a conditional use permit for the construction and operation of a photovoltaic solar electric generating facility in a rural residential zone. The project site is vacant and is zoned rural residential 2.5. The proposed project would operate year-round, producing a total of 10 megawatts of renewable electric power during daytime hours. Power generated by the proposed project would be sold to Southern California Edison. The proposed project consists of rows of photovoltaic panels. These panels would either be fixed or mounted on trackers depending on the chosen technology. These photovoltaic panels would convert sunlight directly into electrical energy without using, without the use of heat transfer fluid or cooling water. Six inverter electrical equipment pads would be located throughout the project site. A substation would be located on the northeastern portion of the project site and would feed the electricity to the antelope substation located at approximately 90th Street West and Avenue J via Gentile line. A chain-link fence would surround the project site, and a 10-foot landscaped area would be provided between the fence and property line to screen the development from the surrounding uses. Access to the project site would be provided via a gate on Avenue J. Irrevocable offers of dedication would be provided for Avenue J, Avenue J4, 110th Street West, and 107th Street West. A master plan of drainage facility is proposed to run through the southeastern corner of the project site. This earthen channel is proposed to be 50 feet wide and seven feet deep, and the applicant shall provide an irrevocable offer of dedication for this future facility. The proposed project would generate environmental impacts during construction with respect to biological resources, geology, and soils, and noise. Mitigation measures have been identified to reduce these impacts to a less-than-significant level. Construction of the proposed project, oops, therefore, staff is recommending that the commission approve the conditional use permit subject to the proposed conditions based on the site having sufficient area to accommodate the proposed development, adequate access, and services being available for the use, and the lack of significant adverse effects on the surrounding area. Am I available to answer any questions, if you have any?
I do, I have one question. Did you receive any letters of opposition from any of the homeowners or property owners within the area of?
We received a total of 11 comment letters, three from state agencies, and eight from property owners. Those property owners were not located within the 1,500 feet that we notify in the rural residential zones.
What is the purpose of notifying them of the, in the 1,500 foot? What is the reasoning for that?
That's part of our zoning ordinance. I believe state law says you have to notify within 300 feet, and based on the fact that the lots tend to be larger in the rural residential zones, it was expanded to 1,500 feet in our zoning ordinance.
I don't have any more questions. Does anybody on the commission want to hear the representatives from Silverado first, or do we want to go through the speakers?
Good evening, Vice Chairman Hall and fellow Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time today to hear our project. We're really excited about this one. You've met us before. My name's Garrett Bean with Silverado Power, and we develop utility-scale solar projects. So what I'll do today is kind of walk you through the approach that Silverado takes since I know some of you are newer Planning Commission members, and we'll kind of discuss the project, how we came to find the site, why it's suitable for this development, and why we're so excited about it. So, Silverado Power is a California-based solar company. We have projects throughout California, heavily concentrated in the Antelope Valley, Riverside, Southern California, really. Our project team has been around for over three years now. We come from a long line of solar developers with over, well over, it's got to be about 60 years of experience total between our executives now. One thing that's very big to Silverado is selecting the right site. The approach in solar development that we have taken is really to go out, find a site, and responsibly develop it. So what we do is we try and go out, we identify existing transmission capacity where we can plug into the lines to minimize the impact, the extra infrastructure that's needed to build these projects. So we don't want to build extra Gentiles, long-transmission corridors if we don't have to, we want to use existing corridors. So that's one way in which we try and limit our impacts. The second thing we do is we go out and we look at the site, we evaluate the site for biological impacts, what it's really going to take to bring it online. So before we even selected the site, we did biological studies to identify if there's species, specific hazards that we needed to be aware of, or impacts that we would create by generating this, this site. Through that, we've really kind of honed down our sites to a couple of sites, and this is one of our premier sites. We like to focus our sites on previously disturbed land if possible. All of our sites are on private land, it's not on kind of the pristine desert landscape, and here, we're siting right next to the Antelope Valley Substation. At this site, we have done technical studies that looked at the biological impacts, cultural impacts, hazardous materials, and such, and we determined that there were negligible impacts. We did identify some species of concern out there, and we've been working with DFG and other agencies to mitigate those impacts to less-than-significant levels. So this is kind of an idea of, you know, how we select our sites. These are sites in Lancaster. One, you can see kind of a dilapidated shack, old foundations, it's not really being used anymore. It's kind of just an eyesore out there. And you can also see here as a view from adjacent to our site is the view of the Antelope Valley Substation, so we're right down the street, we're not far away, we're, it's very easy to plug into the grid. As I mentioned, we're kind of right down the street there, so you can see our project is on the corner of West J and 110th Street West, so we're just on that southern side, and you can see the Antelope Valley Substation to the right. Like was mentioned in the staff report, it's a 10-megawatt project, it's 40 acres, that's enough power to generate for approximately, to power 2,000 homes. Inner connection is along Avenue J, and the local impacts that we're expecting to see is construction, or about 75, 70 jobs for construction during peak construction hours, and then other economic impacts to other local businesses and communities. One thing that we, we definitely make sure we do is we go out, we talk to the communities, we try and work with them to identify what their impacts, what the impacts are and the concerns in case we haven't evaluated it earlier on in the process. By meeting with groups like the Antelope Acres that are here tonight, numerous neighbors outside of the 1,500-foot radius, different agencies, Audubon Society, Sierra Club, Defenders of Wildlife, we have an ongoing relationship with these, with these groups. We've identified impacts such as biological impacts, dust, visual aesthetic impacts, and noise. So throughout the construction and operation, we're making a sincere attempt to try and mitigate those as much as possible. For biological, we'll have a mitigation bank, we're working with the Audubon Society to make sure that raptors are taken care of. Dust impacts, we're working with the Dustbusters, Dustbusters, a local group, as well as the AVA QMD, to make sure that we meet all their requirements. Visual aesthetics, we're going to be doing setbacks, vegetative screening, buffers, and we've addressed noise through a variety of mechanisms, but mostly, once these projects are up and running, there's very little noise. As you can see up here, we do have dust control plans. Just so you know, the panels will be low-profile, although we have a permanent up-to-14-feet in height, they're expected to be around six feet in height by design. So very low-profile, they don't reflect light. You know, lighting is definitely a concern to communities out here. It's kind of out away from the city of Lancaster, they like it dark. All of our lighting is going to be downward-facing, so we don't have light pollution and don't disturb the neighbors that way. Cumulatively, Silverado's projects are expected, not just this one, but all of our projects together are expected to generate over 600 construction jobs and eight to 12 full-time jobs in this region. So this is a big piece of that puzzle. This is a contracted project. That means we're working with the utilities, we have a contract to build it, once we get approval, then we can go forward. We'd be looking at building this project in 2013. Economic impacts to the local community. As I mentioned before, we're looking about seven, at about 70 construction jobs for this project alone. And it's not just about the construction jobs that are happening at this one, it's about sustaining the existing jobs out here, survey crews, grading crews, just current employees, and making sure their businesses are, are running and prospering. Economic studies by a third party indicated that a project of this size would generate around $12 million in economic impacts. So that's direct impacts of construction spending and direct impacts of subcontractors as well as spending money on, you know, businesses, retail shops in this area. So by a third party, that's kind of what you're expecting for a project around 10 megawatts in size. Make it brief and kind of tie it up. We're definitely committed to being an active member of the community. We want to be a good neighbor, a quiet neighbor. We think we can do that with the plan that we've set forth. We're continuing to work with the local businesses, town councils, community groups, project neighbors, we have some sit-down breakfasts with some of them tomorrow, and schools and colleges to utilize local people coming out and into the workforce. So we're pretty proud of the relationships we've built so far. We look forward to making more and would really appreciate your support on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I had a question, I'm sorry. Approximately how close to the transmission corridor are you?
From the Antelope Valley Substation, I think we're about, was that .25 miles or so?
And then pre-disturbed land, can you explain to us what that is?
So pre-disturbed land is land that was used for farming or agricultural activity before. Lots of our sites, you can go back to the actual land and see tilled soil or kind of berms, or it's just really fallid fields. So it was used for some purpose in the past, now we're using it for solar development. So one thing that we did is we went out with the DFG and we walked each one of these sites to really evaluate the biological impacts and the disturbed nature of the site, and we're working to create a great plan to move forward.
Any other questions from the commission?
You mentioned from an environmental impact perspective that there would be very low to minimal. Can you just go a little bit deeper into that, explain?
Yeah, so one thing that we did is when we did our biological surveys, there are a couple of species of concern that were identified in this region. Some of those include Swainson's hawk and burrowing owl. Other than that, there's not really significant species in the area. Now, this is mostly foraging habitat. When, when the studies were conducted, there were no burrowing owls identified on the site, so they weren't using it. As I mentioned, we walked out with DFG-ended sidewalks at each one of our sites, and at this site, there's not really a lot of holes or burrows out there. I guess, kind of indicating that there's not a large prey base out there, but we do know that Swainson's hawks and other animals, you know, kind of prey in that area and use it as feeding grounds. So while this site did not identify any of the species, we know that they're in the region, some areas in the Antelope Valley are more active than others. This one, there's not really a lot of nesting sites next to it. They're several miles away. So that's kind of how we went and assessed the biological impacts. So compared to a lot of other sites that you may go look at where you have desert tortoise and other species actually using the site, this one was relatively benign.
I posed that question because of one of the letters of concern that we received from a resident Antelope Acres. Her concern was that of the, you know, the habitat or plants, of the plants and animals, and also of them possibly losing their rural, rural identity. And based on what you're briefing right now, saying that you're pretty close to the current infrastructure for the existing transmission infrastructure?
Right.
Were you able to communicate that to the residents of Antelope Acres?
You know, we, we've tried and we've had several meetings, and it's definitely understood that this is foraging habitat for various species. We've had the biological studies that supported it, we've received Department of Efficient Game comments that have identified it as such as what it is, and that's all been presented in the public arena. We're also continuously working with the Audubon Society to make sure that all impacts are mitigated, so you know?
What type of feedback have you received from the residents out there?
Primarily that they don't want solar in the Antelope Valley.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else have comments, questions?
You referred to this site as a premier site?
Yes.
Why do you consider this a premier site?
One of the reasons that we consider this a premier site is because it is so close to the Antelope Valley Substation. I mean, this is something that reduces costs and impacts. So that's one of the reasons. So that's one of the reasons why this project was awarded a contract, because we don't, we're not building two, three miles of transmission lines. It comes in at a very low price that's then translated onto the consumer. So that's why Edison selected this and that's why it's a good project from our perspective.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ludiki, we start bringing up the speakers.
Larry Jernigan.
Vice Commissioner Chairman Hall and Commissioners of the Planning Commission. My name's Larry Jernigan, and I'll be speaking in favor of the Silverado project primarily from an economic argument, I guess. I'm actually celebrating my 50th anniversary this month. Not my wedding anniversary, but my 50th anniversary living in the Antelope Valley. My parents brought me here in August of 1962. So they even left, and I never did. I've been here forever. So I've been here a long time, seen a lot of changes, and a lot of wonderful things happen here in the Antelope Valley. I've been involved in the community, I've been involved in a lot of different organizations, past president of many of them, including the Lancaster Sunrise Rotary Club, the AV Engineering Association, and the, even the Lancaster Old Town side, right down here in downtown Lancaster. And I've been in business for over the last 20 years. My office is right over here on 10th West, here in the downtown area. And I'm the current owner of All Valley Survey. And what I want to speak to, and I've known Garrett for about a year now and worked with him about a year now, he's a great guy, and it's a great company. And in his brochures, his company's brochures, they always promise to hire local businesses to be involved in their project. And he's already done that because he hired my company to do five preliminary sites survey, preliminary surveys for five sites. And we've had a, had a great, great relationship. It's allowed me to hire additional people to, to do that work, local people. What I really like about him, I think he paid me early twice, and I really like that, you know? But he's been involved in the community, they've joined the Board of Trade, they've attended meetings to know the community. And when he starts construction of this, it's going to be economic benefit to the community. And that I hope to do the construction staking, survey staking on this project, and many suppliers here in Lancaster will benefit also. So in conclusion, this project is good for the environment, it's good for the local economy, it's good for the local community, and it's good for our country because we'll be less dependent on oil. So I would encourage that you vote to approve this, so we can get over to the Antelope Valley Fair and have Sandy Smith buy us a Emblem Club taco and a soup burger, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jernigan.
Thank you.
Mr. Ludiki, we have another one, other speaker?
Robert Carracus.
Good evening, Mr. Carracus, and welcome.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Robert Carracus. I'm the President of the Antelope Acres Town Council. And while Mr. Bean is happy with our community for his projects, we are not. It's not just a case of this one project. We in Antelope Acres are being totally unindated with solar projects. First Solar is partly in our district, and it has 2,400 acres. Sun Power is partly in our district, it has 4,400 acres. And when we look at the combination of everything else coming in, we're just going to be totally inundated with one project after another. Nobody's happy in Antelope Acres. We've had sit-downs with both of these gentlemen, and I can't say they've been productive in the least. They said that they would come to terms with some kinds of things that we would want from them, and they've not been coming forth. They've basically ignored us. We're concerned about the environment, because with all these projects coming in, it's going to affect the environment. One project doesn't affect the environment, another one doesn't affect the environment. We have six from them, from the county in our area, and the ones coming through the The problem in Antelope Acres is it's already highly degraded. If you go through Antelope Acres, you'll discover that most of it's been either farmed or it's been taken over by the power companies with their power lines. And a lot of that territory under the power lines is very ugly and very barren. So we have a lot of barrenness, and the few places that we have some wildlife seems to be that it would be put asunder. We have quite a few, I don't know if you know it, but that area is a migratory bird area. It's considered to be a very important one. One of the reasons they're not seeing birds and all that is because there aren't any trees anymore in the area. It used to be Joshua trees, they're gone. If there were some kind of trees up there, we'd see a lot more birds coming through. So if we're going to take property that's already degraded and just degrade it more, they're not doing anything for us. We're not getting any kind of improvements in our area. All we're being is inundated with a kind of a foreign entity that's taken over our environment, and it's not nice. A lot of fencing, barbed wire. If you go out to Solar One, you'll see an agency that is totally surrounded by barbed wire, and it has a lot of security.
Thank you, Mr. Carracus. Mr. Ludiki, we have another speaker?
Judith Fuentes.
Thank you. My name is Judith Fuentes, and I'd like you all to please reconsider establishing solar generating facilities on the city limits of Lancaster, on the west side, next to Antelope Acres. Solar should be on buildings and houses, not open space, farmland, or previously disturbed farmland. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ludiki, more speakers?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman. Michelle Supple.
Thank you, good evening. First off, we're not opposed to solar, we highly support it, but it's being so close to our houses out there. We bought those houses, living a rural lifestyle, and it is impacting because they are allowed to come up 300 feet, which is not much, and you have horses, you have sheep, and it's a great impact. One of my big concerns is we are all on wells, and they're talking about building a well, and there's no mitigation if our water is gone. We have nothing. There's no mitigation at all. We are not on city water, it's all well water. And I have some concern on the roads out there because Avenue I and 110th, it is full of potholes. And already, there's a project out there on 100th and Avenue I, and the water trucks are coming in, and every other week, there's potholes. And that's a big impact to the schools, all the kids, you know, the buses, it is a big impact. There's no mitigation at all for any of that. And I also have some concern because there's no fire department out there, it's all volunteer. And you have all that construction, and I'm not saying anything could happen, but with all the dry tinder out there, it's possible. And that's a big concern with the rural residents, in addition to all the other environment concerns. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Supple. Mr. Ludiki?
Terry Hartman.
Good evening and welcome, Ms. Hartman.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the future of Antelope Acres, a small community just outside Lancaster city limits. I find it strange that a business would like to sell or serve alcohol in our community. That business is required to post the hearing information outside the proposed site so that any interested party in the community can voice their concerns at said hearing to help the committee make an informed decision regarding what that community wants. However, the same cannot be said for the solar companies coming into our community. Instead, we come home from vacation to find water towers and portable office buildings along with security personnel who are quick to threaten anyone who stops or walks to the edge of their own property to find out what's going on. The rules state that they're only required to notify anyone who is within 300 feet of said project. This is being a rule error, not too many people have to be informed. That needs to change. The future of our small community lifestyle is being threatened, and no notice was given except for maybe in the paper. Why is that? I realize that green energy is the future. However, the placements of the solar plants will have long-term effects on our community, our water, our roads, our wildlife, our rural lifestyle, and our schools, not to mention the people who travel this area to see the poppies. Thousands of people will no longer be able to enjoy the beautiful views of the poppy fields while traveling to the preserve. Have any of you traveled up Highway 138 to see the new views from there? First Solar has not lived up to any of the promises they made and could care less now that they're in. This is our future. We have already had problems with contamination in our water supply now. What will our future be with the runoff in the groundwater from these solar plants? First Solar used their allotment of water in three months. How long will it take before we will have to drill new wells for our personal use? The traffic to take our kids to school can be a nightmare now. Can you imagine what it's going to be like with the extra traffic from the construction? It will make it impossible to keep our children safe. Our roads are not in good conditions as it is. What they will look like after years of heavy trucks and tractors using them daily? With so much open desert that is available, why are houses and schools being surrounded? Money, that's why. It's cheaper for the solar companies to place them in those areas because of the close proximity to the power stations. Is this the future the council wishes for our community? Have any of you ever gone to the proposed sites to see who will be affected? Where are our benefits? We know what the city's benefits are, money. The short-term benefits will be great, but who's protecting our future? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Mr. Ludiki?
Virginia Stout.
What was your name again?
Virginia Stout, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to start, I'm from Antelope Acres, and I'd just like to summarize that working with Silverado because is not, hasn't been very productive. Number, and if you listened carefully when they were presenting their, his slides up there, and he showed a picture of the site and said that it was ugly and not picturesque on that, just an ugly, old degraded place. And we look at it as beautiful and charming, and that's the thing, the very thing that brought us out there in the first place. It is the thing that made every single person who has a home site out there that's prepared to retire there become the promise that this would be the open space area that you could plan your future on. This is what Lancaster said, this is what Antelope Acres has said, and all of a sudden, because of some so-called green revolution, all of this is going to be changed. It's going to be chain-linked fencing everywhere, this spot, this spot, that spot. That's all you're going to drive around. It's going to see homes in different spots surrounded by chain-linked fencing in the name of, of energy that's not going to do anything about oil, because this provides electricity, the oil is used for automobiles and everything. It's not going to reduce our dependence on oil, it's not what these panels are all about. So they do not work with the residents of the area. I don't think you got any letters from any of the people that were actually, that wrote it, that either own property or that live out there that, that wanted, that said that this was a good thing, that they sat down and they were, had a good talk with Silverado. Okay? The wildlife will be, we're very concerned, there's a lot more wildlife out there. If you had done an environmental impact report instead of a mitigated negative debt, you would have found out a lot more about what wildlife is actually out there. The people that live out there can tell you a whole lot more than just walking at once with fish and game. The people that live out there can tell you about the stream bed, the dry stream bed that goes through there, that they're always saying, "Oh, well, if there's a lot of water, we'll just, we'll just channel it, we'll just dump it someplace else." And, and so because you didn't do an environmental impact report, because you just said, "Oh, well, we don't care about the grading, there's a nice hill there, they can just grade it flat, doesn't matter, let them do whatever," because it's just way out there, and because we know that the city of Lancaster is really invested in green energy, but we really think that the green energy, this solar should be in every single parking lot, it should be in the Walmart parking lot. Every, if every single business that has a large parking lot could generate its own electricity or a part of it, we wouldn't need to be creating, you know, taking away the beautiful open space that people come from miles around to go out to the poppy reserve to, to live, to have a choice of lifestyles in, on that. So that's, without getting any too much more specifics, that's what I have to say. And I wish that there was some way that you could literally, like someone else suggested, drive out to First Solar on 138 and just drive there and stand there and say, "Well, if I owned property here, this wouldn't bother me." And then drive out to J and 110th and stand there after you've seen what it will look like, and say, "I wouldn't, wouldn't bother me to live here," and just see.
Thank you, Ms. Stout.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Ludiki? Good evening and welcome. How would you pronounce your last name again?
It's a silent Q in between, no, it's Disney, yes.
Disney?
Just like it sounds, it throws people off. Thank you, Vice Chairman Hall and Commissioners. I'm here tonight representing Paving the Way Foundation. We're a local, community-based organization, nonprofit, that deals with solar training for people that are working in the solar industry. I'm very happy to have Mr. Bean presenting this project. He, I would like to state that he has reached out to some other aspects of the community. He was very respectful, and when I approached him, he sat down with me and talked to me about local employment, how that impacts the community, the, the, all the aspects of a solar project that come forward that do have long-term impacts, both economically and employment-wise. So I just want to say that I have had good experiences with Silverado. I believe that they are responsive, there are, it's difficult to please all of the people all the time, and the concerns that have been brought up today, I think, are very legitimate. I come from a rural area myself, and I actually live in Antelope Acres, and I've seen some of the impacts that have happened with some of the projects that go forward. And I believe that we can learn from those. Going forward, as we plan new projects and as we learn, Lancaster's had a wonderful relationship with new alternative technologies, putting forth solar, and learning a lot of things about going forward and what works and what doesn't work. And I'm very happy with being able to be a part of the process to improve as we go forward and learn what can work for homeowners, what can work for residents, businesses, and how we can incorporate what everybody's concerns are going forward. So I just want to say that I'm, I want to be in approval of this project going forward. I think they, Silverado has done a good faith effort to be responsive. You can't meet everybody's needs, but I know that they are concerned about the local economy. I know they're concerned about helping families make sure that they have employment and are able to have that quality of life that they're looking for going forward. So I just want to commend them for that effort to reach out to the local community and be responsive to some of their concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Disney.
Thank you.
Mr. Ludiki?
Those are all the cards I have. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Did we want to hear from Silverado again? Please.
Hello. You know, we, we definitely appreciate everyone's comments and concerns, and kind of like Anthony was saying, you know, I think one thing is that we don't want to be judged based on what's happened with other projects. There is a lot to learn from it. We've been talking with different solar developers to make sure we don't make some of those mistakes in the past. There are, you know, we've been approached with fire concern issues, as Michelle was stating, and we understand, you know, that you have to keep vegetation low, don't build a brush, and we're very aware of that, and that's going to come through in our business plan. You know, as Robert was mentioning, the conversations haven't been totally productive. Well, from our standpoint, we feel a little bit differently. We think they have been productive. Now, while we aren't able to come to maybe the terms that Antelope Bakers would want, we're trying to mitigate those impacts that they've brought to us, the aesthetic impacts. And Ginger, I didn't mean to say that this area out here isn't beautiful. What I was trying to highlight is that on some of our sites, there are safety issues, dilapidated buildings, we've seen wells that aren't properly sealed off out in this area. These are concerns that I believe the community should have, and I think Silverado going out to these areas with old foundations and whatnot, we have a chance to at least remove some of those safety concerns. As far as Terry was mentioning about public notice, you know, that's something that Silverado has gone out and tried to do. You know, we understand that a newspaper's not enough sometimes. That's why we're out. That's why we've met with Antelope Bakers for over six years, listened to what they don't like about other projects, tried to address those concerns within our own, to make sure we take this into consideration. We take it very seriously, and we want to try and work with them as much as possible. You know, we could talk about, well, use and other things like that. It does, you know, it does help alleviate oil consumption. That's probably not the, this isn't the proper form for that. But we believe that there's going to be many beneficial uses. There's traffic concerns. People mentioned issues about schools. We sat down with the superintendent today of the West Side Union School District to address scheduling concerns as well as safety concerns to make sure all the children are getting there safely and we're not impacting the education. So we're working, we're trying to be a good neighbor. This is not the end-all once we get a permit. This is going to be a continuous discussion and dialogue. So with that, we, we'd appreciate your support.
Could you give me an example of what kind of terms?
Well, they haven't, I guess what we've seen is we've seen that some other developers have offered up money or to help build a community center or something like that. We'd like our projects to stand alone on their own merits. We want to mitigate the impacts caused by our projects. If we're impacting a school, for instance, one of our projects we have a permit on in, near 90th and H across from the school. What we're going to be doing with them is building a new parking lot because currently they're using parking on our property. So those are the impacts that we want to address. We're not able to give large sums of money away, and that's kind of what we're looking at.
Any other questions?
I mentioned, I heard mentioned contaminated water. What would cause a solar facility to contaminate?
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, and I know water, or Robert and some others brought up the issue of water. So solar companies will use water for the cleaning of the panels. This is a normal process. It only requires about two washings, maybe a year, if that. There definitely is some consumption during construction, which is a little higher, far less than historical water uses have been. Essentially, there is no impacts into the water supply from runoff from the panels, from drainage, irrigation, what have you. So we've been working with, and will continue to work with, the city of Lancaster to make sure we adhere to all the water quality management plans. That's within our condition, in the conditional use permit.
About how much water are you using when you wash the solar panels?
When we wash the solar panels, for a 10-megawatt facility, we're looking between one to two acre feet, and that's probably per year. So that's maybe a little less than, maybe more like one acre feet per washing.
And is there anything else you'd like to add about environmental impact?
You know, I think if you go through the initial study, what's been presented to all the different state agencies, I think we've really done a comprehensive job looking at the different environmental impacts. We had third-party biological consultants out there that did the surveys. We've gone out with Department of Fish and Game. We continue to work with the Audvahn Society as well as the Sierra Club and Defenders of Wildlife. Silverado's been praised by Defenders of Wildlife in the past for the mitigation steps that we've taken. We often go above and beyond. We've talked to Robert before about using some trees as vegetation. As he mentioned, the birds don't really have any trees out here. Maybe we can plant trees on one side of our project so they don't shade the panels, but to give some habitat back. So that, those are things we're considering. We're trying to respect the environment as much as possible. We think this is a great use for the environment. So, you know, as we kind of foster those relationships, we'll continue to develop a strategy. It's not something that happens overnight.
Anybody else?
I actually have more of a comment at the risk of speaking out of turn. You know, those of us appointed to these commissions, we take this job very seriously. And for those of you in the public that do not know, we have a study session of sorts, a special meeting, and we actually go through and we read, you know, what the city has put in front of us, that staff has done collectively. So we don't take this lightly. And I would, I would offer up taking up Ms. Stout's invitation to actually go out, take a field trip, perhaps the commission, just to take a look around. I think it almost warrants that. I would hate to be a resident of that community and feel as though we've not done due diligence and gone out to take a look.
Would probably take that up after we close the public meeting. One question that popped into my mind, one of the speakers said that they didn't do an environmental impact report, and is that why you picked the disturbed, pre-disturbed areas, is because the environmental impact report would be required on the undisturbed?
That's, that's not necessarily the reason. I mean, the reason is to minimize impacts. That's one of the fact, of the facts that you see, is that when you go out there and you do the biological studies, if, if the project were deemed from different agencies to have a significant impact, then we would have done an environmental impact report. But because it was deemed to have impacts that could be mitigated, that's why the environmental impact report was not done.
Anybody else have more questions? Thank you. Thank you. It is appropriate, then, to close the public hearing without objection and open up for commission discussion and/or entertain a motion.
Can we respond at all to this response?
No, sorry.
Mr. Vice Chairman, as a reminder, the, the Planning Commission holds its hearings in the same way each time. The applicant is allowed to speak. Testimony, both for and against, is received. The applicant is afforded the opportunity, although they do not have to, to rebut anything that was stated during that testimony. It is then the prerogative of the Planning Commission to close the hearing and proceed with your deliberation.
With that, the public hearing is, without objection, closed and open up for commission discussion and/or entertain a motion. Thank you, Mr. Ludiki.
Brian, with the construction of these facilities and the wear and tear on the streets out there, how are those addressed during the construction periods, such as the mention of potholes?
You will note, actually, in the conditions list that is recommended, condition number 12 does give the Director of Public Works the ability to require that any public street services that are damaged by the construction traffic needs to be restored to its pre-existing condition. That is something that we have typically required on all of the solar projects that we have approved within the city. So we, we understand that, we understand the situation in regards to that. Many of these roads are not built to withstand a lot of continuous heavy truck traffic, and there is a recognition of the need to have a provision to repair those in some way if there is damage.
Thank you for your rating. Any other discussion, motion? Nope, nobody's going to make a motion for it? Ms. Harvey, did you want to request to read the?
Yes, I'd like the record to reflect that I would propose that we actually take a field trip, just to, if it takes half an hour, hour, just to go see from the residents of the Antelope Bakers, from their perspective, just visually seeing what's, what's out there.
I like the idea of that.
So, Mr. Ludiki, the process would be that we would make a motion to continue?
Well, you have, you have several options before you. And you can take action on this one way or the other. You can continue this to a date certain, if you wish to gather additional evidence or, or take the trip. Recognizing that we are going to have others, there are other solar applications that are coming, they're already filed with the city. I certainly don't think that the idea of a field trip is a bad one, but as to how it affects this particular request, it's really up to you as a commission. You, you can take action, or you can delay it to a time certain if you are more comfortable with that.
Well, I have seen solar panels behind chain link fencing, and I don't have a real objection to them, but it will be up to the commission to either make a motion or to continue it to the next meeting with the field trip.
Since I'm in the hot seat, I'd like to see it continued until we can actually make a field trip.
So that's a motion then?
I second that.
There's no more discussion? We're waiting. Just one more.
Shows that I voted, I'm not sure.
Diana? There we go. Do we have it?
Motion passes 4-1. Ms. Harvey, the, the date, was there a specific date of continuance?
Do I need to provide that tonight, or?
As a commission, you do need, if, you do need to continue to a specific date.
Okay, one moment, please. Can we set it up for the September meeting?
Yes, that would be September...
September 17th.
Seventeenth.
Yes, please, September 17th.
Yeah, we'll, we'll agenda, we'll put it on the agenda for the 17th.
That's to put it back on the agenda for the 17th?
Yes, it would go under, under continued, continued items.
Our final item of the night is item number two, which is the continuation of the public hearing on the citywide residential zone update to review material and take additional public testimony, discussion, and provide direction to staff regarding content of ordinance. Mr. Ludiki, do we have any speakers?
Actually, we, we have no speakers on this item, Mr. Vice Chairman. You'll excuse me just a minute. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Very briefly, this is, once again, the, the opportunity for discussion or testimony on the city's draft residential zone rewrite. We have provided to you, as a part of your package, a couple of items, actually several items. One is a matrix that outlines the comments, both written and oral, that we have received on the, the draft document, and have highlighted for you what staff's position or recommendation on, on each of those items is. Assuming that the commission is comfortable with those, you know, it would be appropriate to give staff direction on how to proceed with those particular items. We also provided to you an additional draft portion of the, the code for what is known as a live-work ordinance and approach. This would affect property that is actually zoned residential but immediately fronts onto primary arterial streets, and what it would do is allow some greater leeway and flexibility on the use of those properties for, for home-based or, or commercial businesses, a pretty typical thing that you see already in some of the rural areas of the city. And we would recommend, again, that that, that be considered on a, in a larger scale. In many cases, because of traffic and other, other concerns, those areas are not necessarily the, the best long-term for residential and probably should be considered as, as areas appropriate for transition. We think that this approach may provide some of that impetus and be a smart way to go rather than a whole-scale change in the, in the land use or zoning designations in some of those locations, because it would still allow for a reasonable amount of control on those uses. Anything else that the commission has in the way of questions or comment, either myself or, or Chun Ying would be happy to address.
Any of the commissioners have anything else they'd like to add to the matrix? I do, they, nobody else does. On page six, on residential zone use matrix, it says, "Commercial solar electrical generation facilities." I was wondering if it was possible that if neighbors went together, could they chip in together and go into commercial generation? We've kind of had that discussion before. It's our, our 22, 2.5.
I don't know that there's anything within the, the rural residential zone that would prohibit that. We're actually addressing more of the use rather than who runs it or manages it. I guess it would depend on, you know, the arrangement that you're talking about doesn't seem as much a land use question as it might be a financial or other arrangement.
Thank you. On page seven, it says that there's going to be a setback on garages, and on page eight, there's a diagram, but it doesn't really kind of show that one, the setback, very clearly. How, how will it change the look of it? There's one that's like two feet back or something like that. I remember reading.
The diagram for, on page eight and also page 10 or 11, they're, they're generic diagrams. The development regulation has specified it within the table, so I would go with what's listed in the table more so than what's in the diagram. listed in the table more so than what's in the diagram as it's more of a generic diagram. It says garage location, "All garages shall be located outer behind the wall plane where the front entrance is located." And then it lists off a bunch of different things, and that's the generic on eight that shows the setback. Okay, so there's one on the next page, on nine, that talks about tandem drive-through, but I didn't see a picture of that. That's in case the lot's too narrow to put a full-size. Right, the, the diagram is intended for what we would expect as typical for development for that zone, so we don't have diagrams that covered all the different scenarios.
Okay. I just, it just kind of hit me when I saw tandem. It's not something you normally see. It's kind of a small garage door that way. Let's see, I had on page 13, I had circled, "Building height was 35 feet in the MDR and HDR zone." How many stories? Is it limited, or is it just one story, 35 feet tall, or?
Typically, 35 feet will give you roughly a, a two-story house, or in some cases, it may give you two stories plus an additional half of something, but the, the intent is to, to keep it within, within the two-story range. That is a fairly typical requirement, particularly in the, in the lower-density zones, and actually is the one that we currently also have, so.
On page 15, there's a difference in small condo projects and large condo projects, but there's a height limit on the small condo projects. Is there a reason for that? I know in New York City, they build needle skyscrapers because of that, but we're going to limit how many stories a small condo project could be?
Right, the, there's a difference between section C, a small apartment or condo, only in the sense that it's the number of units, which is two to, two to 15 units, and as defined for large apartment or condos, 16 or greater units. The difference is that, is maximum building height. There's, just to clarify, there's two maximum building heights. The, the 35-foot building maximum height is for buildings that are located within 100 feet of single-family uses. If it's a building located beyond 35, located beyond 100 feet of single-family uses, they can go up to 55. So, if you look at page 15, it's the same maximum height for a building located within 100 feet of single-family uses, but if it's beyond 100 feet, it goes up to 72, and it's drafted such to accommodate for, I guess, a greater variety of design for apartments or condos that have a greater number of units.
So, that would be a small condo project, if they were far enough away from single-family, could go 75 feet?
55.
55.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman, the, the other part of that, of that thought process and the way that it's drafted is we're assuming, and maybe we shouldn't make the assumption, but we are assuming that smaller projects are on smaller lots, and part of what the code attempts to do more so than the current one is to come up with a massing approach that seems appropriate to the size of the property and the scale of the area around it, and that's part of the attempt to do that.
Well, like, I could see in Lancaster, we have some condo projects that are large or apartment buildings, and they can get pretty high, but there's small lots that for infill, and what if somebody wanted to put in 35 units on a small lot and they had to go up to do it? Would this limit them from doing that?
It's possible that it could, but, but recall that, that once they tip above that 16-unit mark, they become a large project. So, that's really kind of the differentiator, and they would still be subject to the typical design requirements that require, you know, conformity and, and coming up with ways to blend the, the design so that it is in scale with what's around it. But when you start looking at a 16-unit project, you hit that pretty rapidly, so we're assuming that those are generally going to be on smaller lots rather than the larger ones.
Thank you. On page 17, it talks about design and performance measures, and as an old hand on architectural design, I was just curious, maybe you've answered it before, but why don't we reference back to those guidelines, or you could just make a, a note there that says these are in conformity with ADC guidelines, or?
Yeah, we could do that. We carried over a lot of the language from the design guidelines into this section. We've wanted it to be included in, in the zoning ordinance so that it's spelled out in the zoning ordinance. I think it's more of a user-friendly approach as opposed to also referencing back to another document. The, the other reason is including the language in the zoning ordinance gives it, I guess, additional teeth. It's more of a stronger implementation tool beyond just a guideline in, in a, in a separate document.
I, I have nothing else to add if anybody else does. So, without any objection, this item will be continued to the September regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Did we set a date for that? Which is?
It is the 17th of September.
17th. Anything else?
Staff's only remaining question is, is there any direction in, from the commission at this point on the matrix that was added as Exhibit B? To, for, for staff to draft language in accordance with what our recommendations were on that, on those items? Or are you, are you not prepared to do that?
Anybody have any suggestion on it? I, I like the live-work ordinance. I think that should be drafted in, and the stuff I read over in the matrix, I didn't have any comments to change anything, so that's why I skipped over it. Does anybody else? So, is that a good enough answer there?
If it's a consensus of the commission that you are comfortable at this point with staff's approaches on the, the items listed in the matrix, we will proceed with drafting that language.
That would, looks like that's the consensus of the commission.
Okay.
Thank you. And with that, that brings us to the end of this meeting till September the 17th.
Excuse me, Vice Chairman?
Me?
Just a few remaining items on the agenda.
I didn't see that. Okay, it's open again. Director's announcement. Brian, do you have any announcements? I'm sorry.
Yes, I, I do have one, and we, we brought it up, I, I think at your special meeting. We are, at this point, planning as part of the Southeast Transit Village Planning Area Vision Planning Effort to, to have a joint workshop on the 8th of October with the Architectural and Design Planning Commission members. That would be the normal night for your October special meeting. The ADC members indicated that they are able to make that, that date, so with your concurrence as a commission, we will plan to hold that within the city's Emergency Operations Center, and it will give you and them together the chance to kind of work through the recommendations and information on the Southeast Transit Village Planning Effort that we've been undertaking.
That would be our regular agenda review night?
Yes, it would.
Does anybody have any problem with that?
No objection.
No, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, those are the only announcements that I have.
Do we have any other items for the commission's agenda from the commissioners?
Sir?
Public business from the floor, non-agendaized items. The portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agendaized items. Members of the public should be aware that when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda, please complete a speaker card for the recording secretary. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Mr. Luticki, do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers cards, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if there's anyone remaining in the audience who wishes to speak on non-agenda items.
Then this meeting is adjourned to the special meeting for agenda review on Monday, September 10th, 2012, at 5:30 PM in the Planning Conference Room, Lancaster City Hall. Thank you all.